Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 15, 2022, meeting of the Wakefield School Committee. We began our meeting with an executive session around 5:30 tonight. We just exited executive session to begin regular open meeting at this time. I'd like to begin our regular meeting as we do with this Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice
Also, as we do at our meetings, I'd like to read the admission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this point, item number six on the agenda, I'd like to welcome any member of the public who may be with us, either here in studio or in the audience, or via Zoom, to address the committee on any matter that they may choose. Do we have anyone on Zoom or anyone calling in? No? And there was no one here in the studio for such taking an opportunity? So we will move on. Student advisory members, now item seven. We do have some of our students with us on Zoom, I believe. Is that correct?
Hello? Whoops.
Try that again.
Nope, I think you're on mute. Are you on mute? Oh, geez. Maybe it's me. I would have stopped saying that. Hello?
Hello? There you go, yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great. We can see and hear you now. I think we need to turn up the volume a smidge.
Okay.
I don't think that's on your side. It's on ours.
And certainly when you're ready, ladies, proceed. Please introduce yourselves and your grade and what's happening at Wakefield Memorial High School.
Okay, so I'll start. I'm Isabella. I'm a senior at Wakefield, and I have some updates for academics. So term one ended on Thursday last week. Teachers are working on grades this week, and grades will be posted on Monday. Paper report cards will be distributed on Tuesday during homeroom. Parent-teacher conferences are happening tonight, and Revolution Prep is offering an online practice ACT on Saturday, November 19, at 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Information on how to register was provided in Principal McLeod's update over the weekend.
Yeah, and I'm just going to talk about some other stuff going on at Wakefield right now. So next Wednesday, on the half-day before Thanksgiving, we're going to be having a full school pep rally, and we'll be honoring the accomplishments of our fall athletic teams, and the dance team, cheer team, and band will be performing. I am a part of the band, so I'm very excited for the pep rally next week. And I also just wanted to add, I was one of the student leaders for the tours for the building last night, and I got to see the Q and A session, and I'm very excited to be a part of some changes that could be coming for Wakefield, so that was very exciting.
Wonderful. That's great. Any questions for the student leaders?
No? Great job. Thank you for the help last night with tours.
Yeah, I would just say I was on one of those tours, and it was, I appreciated you sort of sharing your space and, you know, both the challenges, and it wasn't just the challenges, and also sort of the things that you enjoy about the space. But yeah, thank you for taking the time.
Yeah, I definitely enjoyed getting to share my opinion and just what it's like going to Wakefield every day, you know, the good and the bad parts of it, just so I'm ready to get a better perspective, so.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Well, good luck, certainly as the first term has ended. So good luck with grades next week, and thank you for your work tonight. We'll see you in a couple more weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Item eight on the agenda, excuse me, consent agenda. We have a motion.
Yes, move that the school committee approve the minutes of the October 25, 2022 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the November 1, 2022 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting, the November 3, 2022 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee meeting, the November 11, 2022 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting, and the minutes of the October 5, 2022 Evaluating the Superintendent's School Committee Training, and the minutes of the October 12, 2022 School Committee Professional Development Retreat as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
We've been busy.
As has Judy, our clerk. Well, well memorialized. Anyways, no further discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item nine, budget items. Christine.
Great, thank you, everyone. Tonight you have your financial packets from July 1 of 2022 through October 31, 2022. You can see we're still in good financial standings. We have an available budget right now with all encumbrances of 10.95% available. That's still assuming that all the encumbrances are still being updated for non-salary accounts. Then you'll see the grants are still being finalized. The Title II-A and Title I was finalized in October. Metco as well, still being spent, and the revolving accounts are still healthy as revenues are starting to come in, as this is for the second month of the school year. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, and then we have a motion for our two payrolls of October.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 16 and number 18 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. We do have one gift. This was a gift that was donated, a clarinet, about $300 in value, from Pamela Walker to the high school's music students, who could also use this clarinet.
Move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of a clarinet valued at $300 from Pamela Walker for the Wakefield Memorial High School music students in need of an instrument.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
It's a very nice gift. Thank you.
It is a nice gift, absolutely. Yep, thanks, thank you.
Ms. Walker.
All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, moving on. Item 10, chairs, comments, and updates. Just very, very briefly, I'll mention and certainly off-open up the floor to any members who had any comments or thoughts to share regarding the tri board meeting. On October 27, a couple of weeks ago now, the annual meeting of the town council, the town finance committee, and the school committee was held. It was, I thought, a very productive meeting. It wasn't very well attended by the public, but I understand people were watching in earnest. But I thought the, I think, you know, as has become an annual tradition in sort of kicking off the budget development season and budget prep season, it was certainly good to hear some of the thoughts, concerns, both from the town administrator as well as the town finance committee, as well as to be able to share, you know, some of the issues that are facing the school department as well. So I thought it was typically a productive meeting, and I think we will certainly be taking into consideration as well as being very mindful of putting together the types of budgets that are representative of the needs of the school district, while at the same time being ever mindful of the limited resources and capacity within the town. There's a lot of lots of things going on, not to mention not the least of which, of course, is the high school project. So, but I thought it was a good meeting, and certainly we want to be able to thank Steve Mayo, our town administrator, and Dr. Lyons, and the town accountant, and certainly the other volunteer boards like ourselves for putting this town in such a good, such good financial position. Any members want to share their thoughts? Please, please do.
I think it's great. In person was great. It's great to actually physically be in the same room with everybody again.
I should say, in the tri board meeting, Doug, it's obvious the work that the various levels of administration that you called out, Doug, yourself, Steve, and I'm going to blank on finance. But, yeah, you guys work well together collaboratively to come up solutions that work best for our community. And so just, you know, call it to all three of you just working as a unit, Incra Scene. I know you have a part in that as well. So thank you for your time and doing the best work.
Thank you.
Indeed, yeah, very true. Okay. Seeing nothing else or no other thoughts to share, let's move on. We're, tonight's, part of tonight's agenda is the evaluation of the school superintendent. This has been a point of discussion among the committee for a few months now. We have worked in earnest throughout, really from, say, maybe the end of September through most recently, through literally probably yesterday, to put together a comprehensive set of protocols and reviews of the goals, both of the superintendent himself and of his administrative team, as well as the goals that have been established for the district and the superintendent's, you know, attention and mindfulness and leadership in making those goals come to be, or prioritizing as need be to set something aside and to add something new into the mix. It's certainly happened very frequently in the last 24 months. We are certainly on the outside of the COVID and the pandemic piece, but we still have to be ever mindful of the two years that we did go through and all of the work that went into that, not just, of course, not just for the superintendent, but every member of the Wakefield Public Schools team. But tonight's purpose is to publicly share with the community the types of comments, thoughts, and evaluation points that we, the school committee, have for the superintendent. So how this will go, and I think the members know this, but just for the community's sake, there are a couple of principal areas of evaluation. One area of evaluation is called progress toward goals, of which there are three standards underneath that heading. Standard one underneath progress toward goals is professional practice goals. Item two is student learning goals. Item three are district improvement goals. The second piece is actual performance against professional standards themselves. Standard one is instructional leadership. Standard two is management and operations of the school district. Standard three is family and community engagement, and standard four is professional culture. So there were two headings, two larger headings, and then sub-standards of standards underneath each of those. The school committee has independently compiled notes and thoughts that I'm confident each member is prepared to share, or certainly, it's certainly voluntary, but each member is prepared to share over any of those or all of those. And then there is a composite score, if you will, or a composite rating, because the superintendent doesn't receive seven evaluations, he receives one. But certainly one evaluation that I, as the chair, take the collaborative effort of all seven of us and put it out as one evaluation after tonight's sharing of independent thoughts. So with that in mind, and having had an opportunity to go through a variety of exchanges in the last couple of several weeks, I would like to offer, and as I put out in an email, if you had the chance to see it, figured we'd go around the table completely without fear of placement, just using frankly the alphabet to decide how the order of member comments would go. So with that in mind, Mr. Bedrow, you'd be first up to bat if you have thoughts to share with regard to the superintendent's evaluation.
Sure. The curse of having B in your name, sometimes that's good. You get personal lines on a lot of things as well. So thanks, Tom, I appreciate it. So just for the audience's perspective in looking at the overarching goals and what the aggregate came out to be, you'll find that on virtually all, Doug met or was proficient at. And so I want to talk about that for just a couple of minutes, because certainly unprecedented times for us. To meet these goals was a Herculean effort, given all of the other distractions that we saw from afar in large part as a school committee, but Doug and Karen, Christine, and many others lived day in, day out. So that's an amazing accomplishment to be able to do that during these times. So I certainly appreciate that greatly. The one that I was actually very glad to see that got even a higher mark and exemplary mark was management and operations. Holding this together during these times was incredible. Your staff, your students, teachers, us, balancing so many things at the same time. I can't even imagine what he did. I don't think he was home a whole lot, quite honestly. Yet he always was so good about communication and accessibility. Doug never hid behind his desk, never hid in his office or behind social media. He was always said, "Call me, you know, I'll talk to you anytime. If you want to meet, I'll meet." And I think anyone in the community that's had any involvement with Doug realizes that is probably one of his many strong suits, that he's always there to talk and listen, and most people just want to be heard at the end of the day, and he did such a wonderful job on that as well. So I think, you know, he kept the ship afloat during times that were extraordinarily difficult for him and so many others, and I certainly personally greatly appreciate the effort that he's done, and I think he's well-positioned us. There's still a lot to do. There always is a lot to do. Doug would be the first to admit that. But I think he's done an amazing job during times that others could never have accomplished half the goals that I believe Doug did during his time that I've been on the school committee as well. So I just wanted to just express my deep appreciation for all you've done, Doug. Wonderful job. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Eileen, call him.
Whatever, please. Whatever, whatever comes to you. Yeah, I mean, ditto what Mike said. His past few years have been really tough. One of the things, I don't want to repeat everything that Mike said, so just one of the things I just want to say is, one of the things that I think Dr. Lyons does incredibly well is his communication with the public, whether it's the open community calls on Thursdays, whether it's picking up the phone and seeing how parents doing, child's doing, checking in with them, checking in with teachers. I think one of the things he does is he's very transparent, and I think especially these last couple of years, I think that was needed. And so, and that's just something that I wanted to just really point out, that one of my comments was, is I actually said, "This is where Dr. Lyons excels." So that's what I said. He's transparent and communicative with parents, families, and stakeholders. He offers weekly community calls and keeps families in the know of all school concerns, which I appreciate as not just someone on the school committee, but as a parent and someone in this town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Fontenella.
Yeah, so for members of the public that don't, you know, have gone through an evaluation process like this, we can basically grade Doug with proficient, which basically means that he's met the requirements of the different standards. But then there's another ranking that's called exemplary, which is kind of going above and beyond, which basically, the way that, you know, we're kind of taught to think about it is, if you're exemplary at something, you would be an example that you would want other superintendents from around the community, other communities to look and watch and observe that they're, you know, that exceptional at it, that at that part of the job, that, you know, it'd be worth inviting other superintendents to look at that particular aspect. And there's also needs improvement, which basically means that in that particular, whatever you're evaluating, that, you know, there's, you know, something that has to be worked, should be worked on. And so I just wanted to go through a few. I think that, you know, for the most part, you know, I think, you know, Doug met the goals and was, you know, the composite ranking was proficient, you know, for most of the goals. I want to point a few things out. I know it's been brought up a couple of times, but one thing that I think that Doug and his team that are ranked exemplary was the administrative structure that's been put in place and the very high commitment to the curriculum that has been developed over the last few years, especially within a very tough environment. I think that Doug deserves praise for setting this up and for maintaining it. You know, I've met with curriculum leaders, and it's evident to me that the structure that he's built is sound, and I think that as long as, as long as the district stays the course, I think that's going to lead to some impressive instructional results. So while other elements of the instructional perspective were proficient, I think that that's something that should be recognized by the community. In terms of communication, I mean, I think, you know, and I know that Mike and Eileen have brought this up, the weekly Zoom calls, and I told Doug personally, I mean, I think that he's incredibly talented during the calls. The calls themselves are a great idea. I don't know what other community does them, but his ability to answer questions that parents are fielding, he has no idea what's going to be thrown at him. I mean, he could have bombs thrown by random people at every week, and he's able to navigate those conversations really, really well. So he's incredibly talented, specifically at that aspect of communication. So I think that in general, Dr. Lyons, your communication skills are, you know, very, very impressive, especially with the community. In terms of, and pretty much everything, you know, most things were proficient. In terms of for my needs improvement ranking, one thing that has been evident, you know, since I've, you know, come here in March and April is, relationship building is very important. And I think that over the last few months, we definitely know that we have to improve, I think, our relationship with certain elements of teacher leadership. And I think that that is something that the superintendent and his team definitely have to work on in order for our policies to be successfully implemented. So I think that that, the focus on relationship building and creating a stable relationship that is going to allow all of these great things that are being built to keep going. So I think that that's something that I would recommend personally, and I think maybe, well, no, at least I would personally recommend in order for us to keep moving forward. But overall, good job. I think it's.
Stephen Ingles.
So I think maybe I'd start on the areas of growth I would consider, and I think sort of communication with teacher leadership is up there, but I don't think I'm sort of saying anything out of school. I think it's something that you know, that we've talked about, and it's something, an area that is getting work. So I applaud that, even knowing that it needs, you know that, and your team is working towards it. So that's, that's great. I also saw in terms of while, you know, and communication is fantastic, there were some struggles, real-world struggles at the beginning of the year with our rollout of Power School, of a dynamic platform shift within our district, and I think maybe that could have been held with a little bit more care. I think there were discussions around whether or not we as a committee give enough support into that area, you know, into that space where technology and whatnot. But I think as a, that was an area where I think we could have handled that better, probably in the same way that you excel in sort of the weekly calls, and this was one thing where that type of rollout, that sort of shift in a whole system that's going to affect everybody, needs a lot more sort of hypercare when it comes out, because I heard ripples from sort of community members and from educators and, you know, across the board. So that's, so those were sort of two areas where I think we're just good, it's good to have goals, things to work on. And at the same time, you know, when we talk about sort of relationships with teacher leaders, every time I talk with on-the-ground level sort of educators going through buildings, whether it's on tours or walking through streets or my own kids, teachers, the overall atmosphere is exceptionally positive. There is just a good vibe when you walk through the halls of the schools, no matter what school it is, and that sort of attitude and that culture is pervasive. It's across the board, and I can't help but think that educators enjoy working in our district, and sort of your, and your team are the reason that that exists. So really appreciate your work in that space. You know, in terms of, sort of, and that's one thing that you do is you promote from within, you champion team leaders and help them, you know, when they say that they need something, an area to grow, or they bring ideas, that's celebrated, it's not quelled, that goes sort of to culture. And then I was applauding sort of your work with increasing our adjustment, council allotment at the same time that we were pairing with Wakefield Health Department and the expansions that they were seeing. Sort of again, that synergy that you're able to capture with what happens in our district in schools, with what happens in the greater community, is something to be sort of celebrated. I don't think it happens everywhere. I think you do it well, better than, well, any other superintendents that I know. And then from an education perspective, I think for teachers, the drive to do differentiated professional development was key. I think you heard that sort of from teachers and saw it to be an effective tool. I think it's gotten positive reception, and so, you know, that's been great. For the student aspect, at least from the elementary level, the addition of your elementary STEM coordinators has caused excitement at that level, and that's only going to sort of bubble up as they, as they move through the district. And so those are some solid choices. So, yeah, overall, I think for this, for this cycle, for this eval, it was hard, because it encapsulates sort of this pandemic, but I think part of this eval, if we go back to your weekly calls, they started off as COVID, and then you found a way to shift them. Like, we don't talk about COVID as much, you find another way to make that tool useful. It's the same thing you've navigated and transitioned very well from this sort of hyper-focused pandemic manicness right back to the day-to-day value that you provide to the district. It's awesome. So, thank you.
Kevin Piscadell.
Great, thank you. I really appreciated this opportunity and this time through in terms of evaluation. I was kind of scared by the tool as it was being described, but I think as we've worked through it.
So, thank you.
Kevin Piscadlo.
Great, thank you. I really appreciated this opportunity and this time through in terms of evaluation. I was kind of scared by the tool as it was being described. But I think as we've worked through it, I grew to really appreciate it and to be able to rate on the various areas, particularly with the evidence and, and have that filled in. And so I think it was really valuable. I think some of my colleagues talked to, I think about, and Stephen in particular, kind of some of the educational things that have been taking place in the district, particularly at a time that was incredibly challenged, challenging to even, to do so. So I always read what I wrote as the overall evaluation. It said, "Being a leader of a school district at this time is not an enviable task. What was already incredibly demanding job became even more so with the onset of COVID-19 and the pandemic that soon followed. Superintendents like Dr. Lyons had no playbook to follow, yet were asked to repeatedly lead in a way that focused on the health and safety of everyone in the district, while simultaneously supporting the diverse and complicated learning, personal and professional needs of students, faculty and staff, and probably community members as well. This leadership extended into the community as it collaborated extremely well with other leaders." And I think we did see that at the tri-board as well, the town manager, board of health, finance, et cetera, to make sure that the town of Wakefield continued to move forward. Despite these challenges, work in the public schools continued. And we've heard from some of my colleagues about some of the educational efforts that moved forward and even flourished at times due to Dr. Lyons' unwavering focus and drive, the administrative team that he's put together, and then certainly the dedicated and hard-working faculty and staff. The evaluation herein reveals that, in my opinion, Dr. Lyons' goals were met and that he was proficient in nearly all of the state's standards for superintendents in the Commonwealth. The success is even more meaningful due to the aforementioned challenges that we had. I want to point out two areas, one exemplary, and then a couple of areas that I too have kind of identified as potentially needing some attention. Exemplary for me was cultural proficiency. And I think in our, as our communities continue to become more diverse, the learners that come, come with such diverse needs, this is something that can't be overstated. And I think the importance, and we see it in a lot of different ways, the commitment to becoming proficient in DEI and social justice issues and those sorts of things. And I said exemplary because the way that our NASC representative said is that this is kind of a leader, something that could be, you know, shown statewide. And I think some of our efforts could be that. And then I also think some of your dissertation work and the research that you had done shouldn't die in your dissertation. Like it could be something that gets shared. I think that the findings, though I haven't read it, but as you described them, I think the findings could be really valuable. And I think that's exemplary. And then a couple of areas, mostly what Mr. Fontanella said that I had come up with in terms of needing improvement. So this is what I had said. "Dr. Lyons' commitment to holding himself, as well as the entire Wakefield Public Schools community, to high standards is evident in his day-to-day work, as well as his expectations of the staff and faculty of the WPS. He has demonstrated the importance of continuous learning by modeling data-informed decision-making and pursuing a terminal degree while simultaneously working in a highly demanding position and navigating a pandemic. He exhibits an appreciation for and deep commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and his own cultural proficiency is evident in his recently completed dissertation research. This valuable contribution to the educational literature is exemplary and something that can and should be widely shared so that educators across the Commonwealth can reflect on his findings and apply them to his practice. Though on my tenure in the school committee, Dr. Lyons frequently articulated that he's seeking to create a professional culture in the Wakefield Public Schools or continue to build upon. This commitment seems to be shared by other administrative leaders as they too bring this up from time to time." The two areas I think would benefit from some attention. And I said, like nearly every organization or institution that I've been affiliated with, communication is an area of growth. I think certainly communication with the community has been particularly strong. But I would certainly encourage, as we've heard repeatedly from some faculty and staff, as well as representatives from the Wakefield Educational Association, that communication within the workplace maybe could be improved. For instance, and I think would meet some changes. So for instance, like communicating the potential update to, the drafting of, or the passage of new policy as an example of something we've started to work on. And then second, it's just not time, I think, to be in the workplace. And we all probably in all our distinct areas of work can, can agree with that. And I think that certainly in education, it's, it's even more so. If you believe some of the things that are being talked about, the pandemic has just had a huge impact, I think, on educators in particular. And employees, faculty or staff are often really tired. And so as we think, at least nationally, if we take a national lens of people leaving the field, feeling overworked, undervalued, I think the way that we interact with our faculty and staff is really, really critical. And kind of working on and demonstrating some leadership to improve the labor and management relationship, I think is really important as we all have these shared goals that we're all shooting for, from the school committee over to the administration, over to our faculty and staff, to continue to, to improve the Wakefield Public Schools and the learning outcomes of those that are here. I think that relationship is so critical. So I'd like to see that to be worked on. But, you know, considering, as I said, all the things that have been going on and all the things that are to come, I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you as, as our leader, the other administrators, and certainly the faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Amy Lynn.
Thank you. So the last superintendent evaluation was in 2019. And we all know a lot's happened since then. So when I was going through the evaluation report, I wasn't, I was taking, because back then I wasn't on the school committee and things have changed in my perspective, knowing like just being a parent and now a school committee member, I also took into consideration just different conversations I've had with members and teachers and administrations over the past few years. So I landed in a lot of proficiencies. There was one exemplary, which we'll get to, and one needs improvement. And then I just had some general, like characteristics, I would say, of Dr. Lyons. I, I think Dr. Lyons is organized. I think he has meaningful direction. I think his messaging and his goals are consistent, wanting to move the district forward, giving students space, teachers space, positive community involvement and relationships. The high school project, which is a big project, demonstrates his talents in long-range planning. Then when I was writing, looking at the goals, a lot of these goals are safe, like year over year, we're going to get curriculum and, and the Power Schools is a huge, and I think the community is happy to be off a bypass. So that was a great goal. But when I was going through the goals, a lot of what Dr. Lyons is, is able to achieve is because of his team and the team that he's built since he's, he's become the superintendent. And I, you know, three new elementary principals. And I can personally attest that two of the elementary schools have really done a 180 as far as morale. So, and then he brought on Kara and Christine, and I, everyone collaborates from where I sit, and they can achieve these important goals. The exemplary was down, hold on, it had to do with, give me a second, I'm scrolling. There it is. Communications, Doug writes well, albeit sometimes a little long, but he, he writes, he keeps the community involved, he keeps the school committee involved. And then, like everyone's mentioned, the community calls are so important. Then the needs improvement, it's, it's what was brought up, just the, the relationships, I feel like because of certain events, some trust has been broken, both internally with teachers and administration and, and with the community in the district. So I'd just like to see if we could get back together and kind of start trusting each other and know that we're all working towards the same goals. And then the other part I noted is that I feel like in one of the, it's like the vision for, I feel like we're, hold on, give me one second. It was the, here we go, the commitment to high standards. So I fight standards. And I feel like we're, we're missing out on opportunities to push the high students higher. We've had these discussions. And even like every level just raises the bar instead of sort of bringing it down. So that's all. So overall, thank you for all your hard work. I know you spend a ton of hours and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. For my part, as a, as an individual member, not, not speaking now as, as chair, just one of the group of seven, I think you have led us incredibly well through some very difficult times. And I think that's really how I wanted to start my, my thoughts. That regardless of what, whether we've had a good day or a bad day, you have remained professional at all times. You have maintained a, a level of sincerity and honesty and decency and respect, respect for whoever is in front of you, whatever the issue, positive, negative, controversial, spirited. And that, that professional composure, that professional dignity, the how we treat each other notion comes through to me in all of your work. Regardless of whether we're having a good day or a bad day, and we have good days and bad days. But I think that's something that is probably fairly, I universally felt, especially by those that may be on the other side of an issue that, that you may be having some, some challenging conversation around. And I think that that, that how you treat others and the respect and the manner in which you, you do so is incredibly important. A couple of points with some specificity. You know, I'm glad that, that, you know, one of our, you know, progress toward goals points is around, you know, student learning goals. Obviously, it, it goes without saying that it should be. But you're not just the, you know, the, the chief executive officer. Perhaps more importantly, you're the chief academic officer. And in so doing, we have had, we have run the gambit in the last, say, 36 months on student learning. It has, it has turned itself upside down and inside out. And I think as a couple of folks have said, I think, if I may quote Dr. Piscadlo, there was no playbook here, or something close to that. And, and there, and there wasn't. But I think the, the manner and the professionalism that you lead us with brought us to the, the best of times in the worst of times. I think you maintained in what was a moving target, especially in, in the year 2020, the calendar year 2020, which encompassed two school years. It seemed like every day, certainly every week, without exaggeration, there was something new that we were faced with, or, or the community was facing, our families were struggling with. And the target kept moving. And I think you worked really hard to keep us as a community, us as a school district, and us as, as, you know, policymakers and elected officials, you know, keeping some, some focus. Focus being first and foremost on students and, and, and staff and safety. Certainly, we got lots of guidance from anyone that wanted to talk to us, from state and federal officials to town officials, health, boards of health and, and health educators and others. And, and juggling all of that through some pretty muddy waters with that new priority, or a different priority being safety, safety first. And then shifting that priority as 20, the year 2020 became 2021, getting, getting teachers and kids back in school. And how, how do we do that? And creating some very creative scheduling. Now, I know that was worked with, and I think a, a very strong collaborative effort was with the, was with the teacher leaders at that time in coming up with some memorandums of agreement over how we were going to conduct ourselves. Those were not easy conversations to, to lead or to be on the other part of. But we successfully negotiated some, some, some pretty, some pretty challenging, you know, modes of operation. And I certainly congratulate, want to congratulate you as well as, as the members of the, the teacher leadership team for bringing us to a place that focused on getting back into school as, as safely as we could in that, in the second COVID year. As we saw last year, and again in the budget priorities for this year, a refocusing yet again on, on how to make adjustments back to school. We were talking about social, emotional needs of kids, talking about the behavioral needs. We even see, we've heard it earlier this year, in the, in, especially in some of our youngest students, those coming into the Doyle, those entering kindergarten, having some very challenging, you know, times. So I'm, I'm pleased that we still, I don't think there will ever be a day where our work collectively under student learning will ever end. So I don't think we'll ever be there. But I think that lots of the complications of the last couple of years you have led us through, and the members of your, of your team, I agree with, with Amy wholeheartedly about the quality team that you've assembled and have recruited and retained. We would be, we would be lost without them, we'd be lost without you. So I think that's incredibly big. I agree with, with my colleagues in general about the strong operations, management and operations piece, again, getting back without harping too much over, over, over operations in very, very new and challenging times, right? The pandemic was, you know, we all should be prepared to write a book on, on how to, how to sit in a, in a decision-making role during a, during a crisis such as that. The engagement of, of families and communities, obviously it's been stated the types of responsiveness, which I think is, is not only creative but unique with regard to the, the weekly, the community calls and, and the openness and the transparency by which you take, yourself and your team takes questions. And if you don't have the answers to, you, you follow up personally. Under the greater umbrella of engagement, we have also had our share of controversies. The last couple of years have not been without some very difficult conversations and a very, in some ways, honestly, divided, right? Divided community. Some of which we all played a role in, hopefully trying to keep people together. But the last couple of years, just by the very nature of the work and very nature of the controversy, of the issues out there, brought about some divide. The pandemic and how that was handled, or how people approached it was, was, was controversial by its very nature, right? Whether we're talking about school schedules, in-school half-days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursdays, whatever those, whatever the day's composition may be, decisions that whether it's a school committee makes, or, or more significantly, day-to-day and hour-to-hour the superintendent makes, there are always going to be controversies around that. How do we, how do we take best advantage of technology and Zoom? And I think that's, that's something that within the controversies, you well embraced. Even though we may be working toward kind of get away from too much of reliance on, on that technology, but it saved so much in the, those years. But we also, you know, continued controversies around, you know, masks. The community was, was divided on that. I very much appreciated the leadership position you took, the, the role that, that you played in being a consistent in delivering a consistent message, which was not always a popular one. But certainly there were, that was a controversy. We had some issues around some, some, some civil rights concerns, both in our schools and within the community. And I think you stood strong on some of those issues. I congratulate you for standing strong in face, in light of and, and in face of some, some, some strong opposition. Certainly, we need to talk honestly, as we have always, or work toward the, the appreciation for how we as a community have, have represented and would continue to represent the future of, of Native Americans and people of color. And the, and, and I think that while that has been controversial, and I think we around this table and the table before, the committee before us have, have provided some of the strategic and, and political guidance around that. You were tasked every day with, with, with managing that and making, bringing some reality to some very, very difficult times. That certainly led itself to the, you know, the logo controversies which we're, which we're still dealing with. So the reason why I wanted to rattle off a few of the controversies is to let the community know. that, or at least let you know that I feel that during the most difficult of times, I want to begin my conclusion with where I began. In some of the most difficult of times, you've maintained professionalism, composure, and an openness toward toward criticism, an openness toward feedback, an openness toward improvement. And I think all of those things make for a stronger leader. Any leader who's prepared to dig him or herself into a entrenched position and not budge is not going to do well. And I think that's a unique area that you've been able to both work well in and, I think, improve in and grow in. The culture, we've got, I think because of the rapid change, many things to do with the rapid change, I've thought long and hard in recent weeks about why we are in some of the some of the morale issues that some parts of the district have, that some members of faculty express, the teacher leadership and others. We need to recognize that. We need to, we need to be mindful and aware, and we need to be open toward change. We need to be open toward understanding that there are other points of view that we may always not disagree, may always not agree with, but we should never discount. And I think that's something that we are quite capable of moving into the new year and doing well. You've had to juggle quite a few things under this rapid change umbrella. Not the least of which is the, is keeping the ball rolling and bringing us to a point where we are able to bring forward a very thoughtful, comprehensive plan about a new high school. We have not been this far along, and we wouldn't have been this far along. There probably wouldn't be too many people in the town that probably would have given all of us a pass through the COVID years to say, hey, let's put that high school project on the back burner because we've got so many balls in the air right now. I think we would have got a pass if we put that aside and focused on other things, but you weren't going to stand for that. You're going to say that the students need us to work on this. The students that are in elementary school and middle school today, who are going to be high school students and call it three years from now, deserve nothing but the best facility in terms of health and safety, in terms of academic standards. And certainly, lots of things that occurred during the pandemic, we learned more and more about with regard to the conditions in the high school. So through all of the controversies, all of the juggling, all of the issues that we need to be mindful of, you did quite a bit of juggling, keeping us focused on student growth, keeping us focused on relationships, some of which are strained, some of which we need to, and need to work on, and some of which are quite strong. And through it all, you earned your doctorate in the middle of all this. So that speaks again to your work ethic, to your professionalism and to your strive. So that's my commentary that runs the range of proficient, needs improvement proficient and having met things. And I agree with my colleagues on many, many of the standards and rather the comments. So to share the collaborative, you know, sort of standard across the board, which would, because again, we provide input as seven individuals, but there is one collective. The progress towards goals and each of the standards under progress towards goals, you have met with grace and dignity, those progress and the goals. Under the performance standards, proficiency for instructional leadership, exemplary for management or operations, proficiency for family and community engagement, and proficiency for professional culture. We are lucky to have you, Dr. Lyons. We are, I know. I'm pleased at the vote that I cast a couple, several weeks ago in renewing your contract and very happy to have you and very supportive of the team that you've assembled. And I think I can speak for the committee in thanking you for that work and wishing you the best in the goals that you've put forward for FY23 and beyond, which we've already accepted. And we'll be working toward the next set of, the next part of this process will be a bit of like a public self-assessment, you know, mid-year, probably February timeframe, February, March. We don't have dates established for that yet, but. So are there any other comments as we're winding down this process with the superintendent? No? We have beaten this to death, Ms. Lehman? Dr. Lyons, would you have anything to share with the committee?
I'm just watching Ms. Lehman crack up. So thank you. Thank you for the kind words. Thank you for everything that you have said tonight. Will give me plenty to think about and plenty to discuss with a district-level team and with administrators throughout the district and teachers throughout the district, right? I think, you know, areas of growth, we, I hear your comments. And I think that there's a takeaway for, certainly for me and everything that was said. And so again, I will go over those and kind of give those some significant thought and really think about how we can continue to improve the district, right? So, you know, what matters most is what happens every day in the classroom with kids. And so, and really what that is, it kind of puts kind of a focus for us in regard to our leadership and our work and our support into really just thinking about how we can support teachers and adults that work with students, how we can support them to do their best work, how we need to think differently about how the workplace is changing, how we need to think differently about, you know, the demands on educators and everyone in public education, how that might be changing and how we might be thinking about that as we go into negotiations with the teachers this year. So there's a lot of work to be done. I appreciate the very kind, thoughtful comments. I really genuinely do. I appreciate the feedback about areas of growth. It's not missed on me, and I think I would be remiss if I didn't close by saying, you know, you can't be proficient in any of these standards if you don't have really exceptional people around you, right? And so our district-level team is, I would argue, probably the most consistent and best in the state. I would argue that our kind of principal leaders and our building leaders are really exceptional. And I think that you will see in the years to come that all of them, if they wish to be, will be superintendents if they wish to be, you know? The job is, some days, not so appealing right now, but I think.
You don't mean tonight.
I don't mean tonight. But I think that they will be amazing leaders, and you'll see them to come. And, you know, the comments about kind of improving relationships with the WEA and the E-Board, I think that right now is something that is not missed on me. And I think we need to be at our very best as we go into negotiations. We do need to create an amazing contract for teachers, right? But also a contract that's sustainable year over year. There has to be a balance. So I, the work is kind of, it's there, and we need to kind of get to it. And I look forward to continue to talk about this work. This is a great gig. I'm honored to have it. You know, grateful to the people that came before me, that helped me, and continue to kind of be mentors for me today. So that's really what I have to report, and I can report from, and from my parents that they'd be very pleased that this is recorded. So that they can cherry pick just the things that they would like to cherry pick and share with the rest of my family.
We could add them to the evaluation process.
That would be, that would be something special. So thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The last item under my action items tonight is a brief update, which is more of a statement with regard to the high school logo, the aforementioned high school logo. So I think it's, a couple of points of important note. As the community knows, we've discussed here around this table, it's been discussed in the local media, both social and print, that we had recently received a letter from Ohio State University's attorneys with regard to the logo, in regard to use of imaging that they consider part of their brand. Not necessarily trademarked or copyrighted, neither of those words were used, but certainly an image and a brand that they consider that we may be diluting as part of that. So number one, we want, again, to acknowledge our receipt of that. And they have asked us in a firmly worded letter to discontinue the use of the imaging and the logos that is, that is, that is our interim logo. I think it's also important to note to the community that a logo has not yet been voted. This committee and the work of the logo committee at the high school had recommended three logos. We were going through that process. We never voted on a logo. So the logo that Ohio State is asking us to discontinue use of is an interim logo, right? So I think that's one important to state, that there is no logo that has been approved by this committee or approved by the superintendent. So that's point one. Point two, to Ohio State's concerns, I think it's within the district's interests and the town's interest to not protest their letter, to agree to change the things that they consider a dilution of their brand. Our attorney in this case, Town Council, Thomas Mullin, is working with Ohio State University attorneys to land at what we're going to be doing with regard to that. We don't have specificity yet around how that will look. But it's certainly, in my view, as the superintendent, I have obviously discussed this in earnest, as well as Town Council Mullin, that we should move forward with the appreciation that we're going to discontinue the use of the interim logo. And we will ask the superintendent to present something to us as far as looking for a new logo within the confines of the work that the logo committee had already done. It was almost, what, six, seven months of pretty strong work there, and we have student survey data. We've got lots and lots of data that have brought us to, brought us with lots of good information. So I think the superintendent is prepared to bring forward a recommendation at our next meeting with regard to how we proceed working with the high school community, staff and students on what our next steps are. The third or fourth thing, I guess I wanted to mention as part of just these brief remarks tonight, is there some concern within the community or some maybe rumors that Ohio State is suing us? They are not. The letter that they provided us with was, it certainly claimed or made reference to the, if we didn't take certain steps, that they could sue us, which of course they could, but they have not. I know there's some social media out there saying that we're being sued and so forth. That is not the case. In fact, we're taking, working very strongly to take course of action to comply and to support the wishes of Ohio State. That's a certainly battle that the, in our view at this point, while we're presenting it where we're at, it's certainly not in our collective interest to take on exterior battles that need not be fought, never and I need not be won. So those are the points I just wanted to say, just to bring the committee up to speed, bring the community up to speed. And the superintendent will have some recommendations for us at the next meeting. Okay, item number 11, superintendent remarks and reports. Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I'd like to take my agenda out of order.
Please do.
To get Mr. Kent. I'd like to invite our athletic director, Brennan Kent, soon to be Dr. Kent. To the table to give an update on fall sports.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lyons. Great to be back here with everybody. It's a busy time right now, so fall is winding down quickly. And the crazy part about this time period is we jump right into winter sports, the Monday after Thanksgiving. So trying to get everything ready for winter while also kind of managing the end of fall sports. We've had a great fall season. I'll just recap a few kind of highlights from the fall. Swim just competed at States this past Sunday. They came in ninth place. We had two summers in particular who did exceptionally well. Audrey Cook came in third at States in her events, and Grace McHugh came in fourth. Boys in cross-country, it sounds like a broken record, but it's just year in, year out. They're amazing. Boys cross-country just competed at States. They came in second at States. Girls cross-country came in fourth. We had multiple cross-country runners that medaled, came in the top 12, top 15. Two in the top eight, Leif Jones came in fifth place. Micah Rhea came in eighth. Both chair and dance are competing at States. They both qualified for States, competing at States this weekend. Golf team had a great season. They beat writing for the first time in 10 years, which was a big accomplishment for them. They came in fourth at the Middle Six League meet, and they did really well at Division Two North sectionals. Volleyball just missed out on the tournament. Field hockey had a great year, especially towards the end of the year. They really improved and finished strong, finishing 10, 7 and 1, qualified for States, unfortunately got knocked out five-minute jog. Boy soccer had a great year, finished with a record of 9, 3 and 6, also qualified for States. They got eliminated by Marlboro. And a team that's probably garnering the most attention this fall is our football teams, 10-0 right now. First 10-0 football team in Wakefield High history. And they actually, they qualified for States. They won their first round game. They went down to Plymouth South. They upset the number three seed. And now they're in the quote-unquote "final four" this Friday, the semifinal state championship game. If they win that, then they go to Gillette Stadium for the championship game. Little kind of controversy while this whole meeting was going on, I had to step out. They announced the site of the location of the semifinal game, and it's supposed to be a neutral site. We're playing North Attleboro. We're going to be playing North Attleboro at Milford High School, which I think rubbed some Wakefield fans the wrong way. Definitely, I've already, my mailbox is already filling up here. A couple towns over from North Attleboro, so, you know, I'm going to reserve. I actually already emailed the MIAA just asking how they kind of came up with that decision. So I'm going to reserve comments on that until I have a chance to talk to them. But all in all, great fall season, and we still have a few teams alive. Like I said, football and cross-country is going on to all states. So good stuff and hoping that it can continue into the winter, so.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Brendan?
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bren. Appreciate the time, Brendan. So next, I would like to just give a brief overview of our meeting last night. Last night at Wakefield Memorial High School, we got together. We had a community forum. This is the 10th community forum. The prior nine community forums have been kind of hosted and directed by the PBC. Those meetings were done online. This was really our first meeting that was done at the high school in person. We also had a Zoom link as well, active. But to start the meeting, we gave people an option. If they wanted to come in early, the meeting started at 7:00, but if people wanted to come in early, they could come in at 6:15. And we had students that gave tours. We added, I think, five groups. We had close to 70 people who were present at the meeting. So it was a pretty, pretty good-sized meeting, and students did a great job. You know, students kind of give their lived perspective, which is, which we genuinely appreciate, and that's what we wanted to provide to people that came to the meeting. So people got a tour. we wanted to provide to to people that came to the meeting, so people got a tour, then what they kind of saw was a brief kind of slide deck presentation, similar to the presentation we had here last. So it was roughly about 15 slides, the presentation was made, the the educational plan was talked about by myself and Amy MacLeod, representatives from the permanent building committee, Phil Renzi was there, he talked a little bit about the community forums and also kind of the financial aspects of it, we had our architectural team members present, we had, you know, five members from SMMA from the architectural team, and from our project management group, we had two members present on on the panel as well. So we went through the slide deck presented just to recap where we are, and for the for the viewing public and for the committee, where we are at this point is we've committed, we've completed schematic design, we're in module five, and we're going to MSBA for approval to move forward on December 21st. So they will review all of the work that has been done in Wakefield so far, and and just to recap, you know, we are in a four-year, almost five-year, a lockstep pre-construction process, you know, you have to successfully complete module one to go to module two, to go to module three, so when I say lockstep, you can't, you get no second bite at the apple, right? And so and if you kind of don't meet the expectations of MSBA, they will take you out of cycle, they will say, you know, the work that you've done to date has not quite met expectations, so they will take you out of cycle. We've met all standards and expectations of the modules, the work of both our design team and our project management group has really been, I would argue, exemplary. The project management group also, I feel like we can't share this enough, maintains a website under Wakefield, it's it's WakefieldMHSproject.com, and so if you look up, if you were to Google Wakefield Memorial High School Building Project, you can get to it that way as well. But this will, that will, that site can summarize all of what I'm describing as well. So last night, we did a kind of an overview of where we're at to date, we gave a summary, the architectural team has has really created some remarkable aerial views, three-dimensional views, that really give you a sense of of where we're at in our development, and so we shared those with the committee, and then the panel was seated at the front of the cafeteria, and we answered questions, there was an open mic, as you can see on your screen right now. Ryan, thank you very much, or Ian, for bringing that up, much appreciated, this is the website that contains the information that I was referring to a moment ago. And so so last night, after we shared our slide deck, then the panel of all the persons that I just described, you know, took took questions from the audience, and so several questions asked about the design, the educational plan, it seemed like the majority of the sentiments that we were hearing were, yes, we're in favor, we know we need a new building, but how does this affect our accreditation, you know, because NEASC has kind of put us on accreditation, on probation, and they could remove our accreditation if they so chose, if we weren't making effective progress toward changing the challenges that we have in the building, and in this particular case, based on being accepted into the MSBA grant and progressing like we have, they have, they're keeping us on a probation status in regard to our accreditation at the high school. We got questions around, you know, the the budget, why the why so much, why have we increased so much in terms of the the financial estimates that happen?
Excuse me.
And so right now, and the other the other piece that was really pointed out that I think is important, is that the price, the with the escalation for the high school project, this isn't just for the building, this is for the entire project, it is, the design proposal is to build on the Beasley Oval and to to reconstruct the Beasley Oval, a new track and a new field up at street level beside Woodville, and so it's also to to straighten out Hemlock and put in a traffic circle. The entrance for the vocational school is moving down the street, so the buses and traffic going back and forth to the vocational school is going to be lessened, and we feel like the straightening out of Hemlock will make that kind of merging with North Ave a little, maybe a little less treacherous. But we we discussed all these things, we talked about the total cost of the project, we also shared what we believe, what we know for information at this point in time around changes that are happening with MSBA. So MSBA had notified us last week that they are slowing down accepting of applications for their accelerated repair program to redirect funds for construction projects that are in the queue. Now, when they say in the queue, we anticipate that they're referring to the 16 building projects that they have going in the state, one of which is happening at Wakefield Memorial High School. So that's a that's a very, so and we we're hopeful that that will offset some of the costs or increase the allocations that will come back to the town. But that is a very quick summary, and and we ended the meeting, we stayed after to address some individual questions, there were students that stayed after as well to give a second tour for parents that couldn't make the first tour. So I I think overall, it was a successful evening, I think the turnout was positive, I think the give and take with the panel in person went a little bit more smoothly than it had has gone previously on Zoom. It's hard to have a conversation or do a back and forth on on Zoom, but we greatly appreciate the way that PBC and Left Field has negotiated all of that work, and there there continue to be amazing supports for us. So that's where we are, happy to answer any questions that anyone might have at this point in time.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on what would happen if we did lose the NEASC accreditation, because I think that that's something that's not clear.
I mean, that's a that's a great question, the so if if we if we lose the accreditation, so if if we were to lose the accreditation, I think NEASC is willing to work with us to maintain us on what the probation status if we're still demonstrating that we're acting in good faith and and are looking to address the deficits in the building and the teaching areas that have been highlighted through the accreditation process. So if we were to lose it, I I don't think, you know, the the sky would not fall necessarily, but I think, you know, I think it's a it's kind of a a mark against the school that that has is doesn't look like we're progressing and maintaining an accreditation that most other schools have.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't know that it would kind of put us in a favorable light, but with the exception of that, I think they're more than willing, the leadership at NEASC is more than willing to work with us and the high school administrative team, again, long as we're kind of progressing in this area, where we're looking to improve classroom teaching spaces, yeah.
I would I would just sort of bring up, because I didn't know this as of last night as it relates to accreditation, sort of the conversations that I've seen around that, it makes it sound like we're in a in a holding pattern, where we're waiting, but what came out last night is that Ms. MacLeod is in continued communication with, you know, NEASC, so this isn't something where we're just hovering, like work is being put in to keep us, sort of, and keep them apprised of our our status. So it's just to give the idea, like, we're we're not just on parked, like, where people are working to keep us even where we are now.
Yeah.
So so I thought that was important. One thing that came up during schematic design last night, some people had questions about even like some designs like around the parking lot, and so it's important for people to know that the plan is in, like, there is still plenty of public input that's forthcoming in the plan, plenty of chances for sort of voices to be heard in the space, and so it encourages people to to sort of do so as we move forward. I think what's important, we say that we're, you know, we're going in front of MSBA, looking for their thumbs up, you know, currently, that's the work that your team has done, that is the work that sort of Left Field has done, you know, you have you've put in those hours to get us here, once it gets past that, we get into that critical, sort of the town piece of that, that we have to put support behind, and that's our job, and that's, you know, our community's job, and so just to let people know that once the MSBA will likely approve sort of our project, the work that you put into it is exemplary, once that happens, our town council will decide when we do a town vote, that'll come up in January, that will likely, hasn't been pinned yet, but I think it's going to be the 21st or the 28th, where we'll all file into the Galvin most likely, and and take a vote, and it'll take two-thirds of our town to to sort of approve this, to move it forward. So it's sort of, as we talk about where we are in the process, I think it's, people need to know that sort of, I think you've done the work, you've got it to the space, there's a there's a bridge that we need to make to get to further that work, and that work, you know, people in our community need to realize that it's not a done deal, there's work that we have to do on this side of the table, to make sure that that's, you know, we're pretty sure this is what's right for Wakefield, but sort of finding the mechanisms to fund it, because that's what came out, there was wholesale support for the building, funding, finance, that's where the concerns were.
That's the challenge.
Yeah.
I also learned last night in the meeting that at one point in time, Galvin was in the exact same space.
Yep.
And the estimate to build a new Galvin was $32 million, and it was voted down, and so, and then they get knocked out of the queue, so they had to start again from scratch, and it was, you know, eight or almost a decade later, and they built a building for 78 million, if I if I heard that correct.
Seventy-two, I think.
Seventy-two million, but more than 32.
Yeah.
Right? And so, so but what's interesting is this notion of, and someone asked this question, and and our the the design team answered this really well, is someone asked this question, so, you know, what are the, you know, what's the cost benefit analysis, right? So what happens if if we were knocked out in this particular round, or or we didn't get the vote, what would happen? And so it likely would mean that we would go back in the queue, like, same thing that happened to Galvin, and we likely then would be building instead of, you know, opening a new school in 2026 or 2027, you know, either the fall of 2026 or January of 2027, it likely we would be opening a new school, if at all, in in 2036 or 2037? So when you think of it in those terms, you know, for me, it certainly creates a sense of urgency around, you know, we really need to be thinking about this, and and it is, it's all about who turns out, because MSBA will vote on the 21st. If they vote in favor of this project moving forward, there's a fixed amount of time before we need to have a special town meeting where we will need a two-thirds vote. After that meeting, there will then also be a ballot vote, right? That will like, that would likely happen, it's my understanding, so I I'm not quite sure on the timeline, but it's my understanding it would be if we got the two-thirds vote, and it would go to a ballot vote in March, and so, and at that point, it would have to also be voted up, like, you know, people would have to support it, essentially, the the community would have to support this through votes, through one is a physical vote at town meeting, the other one is a ballot, but on two occasions, which is big, right? So that means if if people are interested or feeling the need, I think that it's all about, you know, turning out, getting people out to vote, but.
Yep.
So happy to answer any other questions that anyone has. Thank you very much.
There are a couple other community forums on the calendar, right?
There are, the next, there's supposed to be one in December.
Is it December 8?
That's a that's a permanent building committee meeting.
Yeah, and so, so I think that, yeah, so I I'm not, so the next community forum, there is a question about whether, you know, how it would happen, be a Zoom or in person, my hope is that it could be in person, right? Because giving people an opportunity both see the space and see what they're voting for, and also to be able to give and take is is just really critical.
But last night, last night was a hybrid, there were, there was an opportunity to take place in Zoom, and there were people looking for questions.
Yes.
That could have been asked.
Correct.
So.
I think we got one or two questions that were answered by the panelists when other people asked similar, asked similar questions.
Yeah.
And so that meeting will also be, that was recorded, that will also be uploaded to the website and put online there, so. That's an update from community forum number 10, but if, you know, but again, back to our initial point, it's it's really about getting people out to vote and 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 also letting people know the information, right? And so there's a lot of, so some people, someone said to me last night, I thought it was a done deal, like, I thought, we're just getting a new school, it's like, no, no, we're not just getting a new school, we have to, we, it has to be approved by the community. So that's where we are, again, we had 60 to 70 people, students were excellent, they just were fantastic, and we learned quite a bit last night, you know, from all involved. And so just moving ahead, I think I'd like to, I'm I'm going to be presenting tonight for Erin Manzey, Erin is helping out a PTO this evening, and regretfully couldn't be here, and so she will, could report on this, again, much in a much more comprehensive way, but she coached me quite a bit today, so I'll see if I can't do do her justice. And so, so the World Language Department is seeking support of school committee for an April 10 to April 20, 2024 trip to Rome, Sorento, and Athens, and I see we have Will Kevin Harris and and Lucia on the call, they're on the call, they were previous chaperones on the last trip, is that accurate, Will and Lucia?
Yes, it is.
Great, great. And so this is a nine, or 10-day, nine nights, a trip to Rome and Athens, it's for, open for all World Language students, and so it will leave on Wednesday, the 10th, which is the Wednesday before April vacation in 2024, so not this spring, but next spring, okay? And so the the timeline is is actually, I think, beneficial for students and parents, it gives them an opportunity to plan ahead, and because there, there's going to be a little, I would imagine, some some savings required, some some projects to make a little extra money to pay for this as well. So, so again, it's Wednesday, the 10th, they would leave, likely it could be in the evening, so we don't know yet if the Wednesday to Friday would be missed by students, would they would miss school, but of course, they're, they'll make up all work that they miss, and they'll be squared away there, but they'll be gone, everyone will be gone the entire next week, which is April vacation, it's four nights in Rome, one night in Sorento, and then four nights in Athens. The tour company, Passports, has really an exceptional reputation, they really take good care of persons that are in that are in their charge, right? And so a lot of companies don't do and provide all that they do, and I'll cover that as I get to some other slides. So the first bullet, registration will open December 1st, 2022, that's a typo? Go ahead.
No, good, you just said it.
So registration will open December 1st, 2022, there's an early registration benefit, you get a little discount there, and then the registration deadline is June 1st, 2023. So the deadline for easy pay, so there's easy pay and convenience billing, one allows for you can pay as you go, and the other one gives you kind of a set budget, where you pay monthly leading up to the departure, okay? So that the the peace of mind plan is just an additional plan, it's like an insurance policy that you can purchase pre-trip, not post-trip, but pre-trip, in the event that you needed to change and withdraw from the trip, they would reimburse you, I believe, 75% of the total cost, which is terrific, and so, and I think well worth the investment. And so in in the fall, there'll be, the fall of '23, there'll be a student and parent meeting to talk more about this. And so I talked a little bit about Passports and the reputation that they have, you know, again, they do a great job, they have bilingual, full-time kind of tour directors and people guiding the trip, they also, their chaperone to student ratio is is one to six, or six to one, that's one chaperone for every six students, which is good, because some of the travel companies are one to 10, right? So this is great because it gives, I think, more adults an opportunity to travel, which is really, I think, fun for a lot of teachers, there aren't many perks like this in the job where you get to travel abroad, and and yes, it's work, and yes, they're working with students, but I think that the chaperones have as good a time as the students, is that fair to say? Is that fair to say so far, Lucia?
Definitely, definitely. And it's been a wonderful experience for both the teachers and the students. I know some of the students that have traveled in the past and have since graduated with touch, they're always reminiscent about the Italy-Greece trip. They've definitely changed their life for the better.
Great, great. So the educational objectives here align with the school curriculum. Really, it's an amazing opportunity, as Lucia just described. You know, when kids get away and you take kids out of the school setting, they have to rely on themselves and one another very differently, and the adults. So the relationships that are made are really life-changing in a lot of ways. And so it helps them gain a different experience, confidence, and also an experience where they're in a different culture. For some of our students, often for first, first time, right? But they're in a controlled environment where they're supported and they're learning with others. So it's really, I think, just a great opportunity. Here's the itinerary. It's, it's, might feel a little like an eye test, the text is rather small. And so in, in day one, we're traveling. We arrive in, in Rome first, Lucia, correct?
So this trip is very similar to the one that I done a few years ago. Like, so initially, everyone arrives in Rome, and, and it takes some time. You know, we're going to go to the Colosseum, we're going to visit the Pantheon. And then from there, we're going to take an excursion that we're going to go to Florence. So there is a fast train that is called Faccia Rosa, that we can go to Florence from Rome within the same day. In Rome, and I hope I said that already, like, we're going to visit the, the Colosseum as well. Now, there are opportunities also when we are in Rome, that we're going to take like a little day trip to Sorento, that's going to be day six. And from there, we're going to take like a water taxi going to the island of Capri and also Anna Capri. And then we spent like about five days in, in Italy. And then we're going to be flying over to Greece. And then, you know, the students are going to be exposed both to the Italian culture as well as the, as the Greek culture, architecture and work of art.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You should, you should auction off trips to chaper, or opportunities to chaperon this. And so, it'd be great, and so.
Wait, would we have a long list?
I bet you do. I bet you do. How many administrators have volunteered?
All of them.
Right. Right, so we, we need to talk with Lucia. And so, you know, I, I mentioned Passports a moment ago, they, again, they do a great job. I think one of the things that's really telling, I'm going to just jump ahead, is, and I'll, I'll jump back to the, to the, to the finances in a minute. But, you know, when, what's included, right, is, you know, they kind of, what do we call, post-support? Like, while you're in the trip, what do you get for support? You know, one of the things that we always look at as school administrators is, you know, what happens if kids lose bags? What do you do if you miss a connection? And, and really, the, the one that we really, really pay attention to is, you know, what happens if someone needs medical, you know, any type of medical care, right? Can we get it? And, and then, you know, sometimes, you know, in other countries, if you're not traveling or they can't, you know, you, you don't have insurance or, you know. The trip covers all of this, so, which is really amazing, right? And so I'll, I'll jump back and I'll cover this in a moment. But, so again, I think Passports is, I think, the best company that, that I think the, the World Language Department could have chosen. The cost for this trip is $4,500, $4,484, which breaks down, if you were paying on the monthly plan, $270 a month, the overall program cost. And, and there are kind of discounts, there's a scholarship discount, and then there's an early enrollment discount, which brings it down to the $4,584. And the easy monthly payment plan is, it, it budgets out where there's the convenience plan, you can just pay as, as you go, as long as you're paid by a certain date in full, then you're set to go. But that's where we are, and we are seeking, this is what's included. The peace of mind is the additional insurance, appropriately nicely kind of phrased, peace of mind insurance, right? And so that might help you spend your money on that. But that's it, we're seeking the support of the school committee to get back at kind of the regular planning of our international travel. And so this is a great opportunity for kids and adults, and we seek the support of school committee.
Can you go back to the first slide? Please. Okay, thanks.
That one?
I just, there's no language in the motion, so I need some. Okay. Move that the school committee approve the proposed trip through Passports to Rome and Sorento to Athens during the timeframe of April 10, 2024 to April 20, 2024, as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion or questions for the superintendent or the, or the teacher team that's with us tonight? Steven? Oh, yeah, Steven, sorry.
I was just going to ask if there are any mechanisms for, for families that might have a financial difficulty.
So Lucia might be able to answer that. Lucia, can you share any information about scholarships if someone has a financial hardship?
Okay, so, so I, I led the Italy-Greece trip in the past for personal reasons. Callie Bryson, who's going to be leading the trip this year, so she might be able to answer that. But in the past, we have done some fundraisers to help out the students. And, and also with, with Passports, there are some opportunities that, that they offer scholarship. Like, for example, for every six students that enroll in the tour, there is a small scholarship. But to be honest with you, like, usually what we have received from the fundraisers and the scholarship, it just, was just able to give us the opportunity to trick the kids out to lunch or to, so has not, the funds have been kind of limited. So we don't have something in place right now to be able to support like a student to cover the entire amount. And that is a very good question, but, you know, I'm sorry about that. I hope, I don't know, Will, if, or Callie?
Yeah, I can, I can explain that. So Erin and I have been in communication with Passports for the last week, maybe. And so they told us that it's about $200 in scholarship money per every 10 students. So it's not like a huge amount of money, but it's definitely something. I know I'm going on Erin's trip to Paris and Barcelona this spring, and she got about $2,000 of scholarship money for about 30, I think there's 45 students going.
Okay.
Kevin?
Yeah, that was actually, Mr. Ingles stole my question, so that was exactly my thought. You know, just, I enthusiastically support this, as, as I think I always have, as most of us always have. And these are really amazing, and I think you had said life-changing opportunities, and I think they are. And there's not a lot of those, you know, in the course of our life, and I think this is one of them. So just appreciate all your efforts. It's definitely fun to go, but it's a lot of work too. So I appreciate all of you that have taken the time out of your own breaks, you know, to, to do this as well. So, yeah, anything that I think maybe we can be creative to help maybe some families or students who maybe won't be able to access this, maybe even taking advantage of some of the bigger events, 50/50. I don't know if you can do that. Whatever's legal to do, I don't think you will, whatever's legal to do. You know, definitely try to do as much as possible, because these are amazing experiences. So thank you all, look forward to supporting this.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you, you know, very much, and the other teachers and faculty who have worked to pull this together, not only this year, but certainly in the past. And it's great to be able to have, have this come back and to be something that so many people are excited about. So thank you, I think you did a terrific job. I'm sure Ms. Manzi will be pleased that, at the, the representation you were able to make tonight.
No, my.
We didn't vote.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we weren't moving on, I apologize.
I was getting a little nervous myself.
No nerves necessary, people, you can relax. Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Please tell Erin Manzi thank you.
Yep, here, here. Okay.
That's it for me.
Item 12, subcommittee reports. Finance and facilities, Mr. Bedrow.
Sure, Mr. Markham was kind enough to fill in my absence at the last one. So I'll give some highlights and you can sort of fill in from there. So we always enjoy the Tim O'Brien Show. It's always very entertaining for all of us and a cast of characters and projects that I can't even keep track of anymore that he discussed. Christine talked about, you know, where we were financially, but also, given the tri-board meeting, that's really the beginning stages of the budget process. So that will start to kick into gear in earnest very, very soon. So I know we're going to try to connect up with Jim Sullivan and some of the finance committee members very soon as well. Did I miss anything?
No, you did terrific.
Thank you again.
Okay. Labor and personnel, I just mentioned that we've had a, a couple of executive sessions lately with regard to hearing of a level three grievance and some beginning conversations and some strategies with regard to beginning negotiations with Unit A, which will be forthcoming soon. So certainly stay tuned as we, as we do more of that. Student services, Ms. Lehman.
Yes, we met on Monday, November 7th, so a couple of weeks ago, no, last week. Days are getting long. And we, we focused on where we wanted to take the subcommittee this year. And we had a discussion about executive functioning, you know, what that looks like at different grade levels, what are the expectations? So I think Rosie and Kara are going to take the lead to talk to the curriculum coordinators to see about getting a survey. We were looking at the transition grades, four to five, eight to nine, and maybe 12th grade being what, what should you, what skills should you have when you graduate high school? I'm excited about executive functioning. And our next meeting is Monday, the 21st.
Great. Policy and communications, Mr. Ingles.
Yeah, we, we had an interesting meeting the last week where Kevin's work over, Kevin Fatnella's work over on the, as a liaison to the youth council brought forth Ahmed. And he spoke with us about the, the possibility of having a, a student role, non-voting role, sit with the school committee during meetings. We talked about that quite a bit, his thoughts on that, we put it back and forth. We thought that maybe we could do some, some policy work around it, wanted to bring it to the greater committee for consideration, to see if that's something that the committee was interested in us doing further work on. Also in that discussion, it was, we talked around sort of, that's a role that the student advisory committee used to do, partake in, sort of pre-COVID. It wasn't as much of the, the updates just at the beginning, it was kind of a sitting role and even had a chance to perhaps answer or ask questions of some of the bodies that come in front of us. And they have potentially expressed interest in sort of taking up that, that work again, that is, that may have been prior. So as a committee, if that's okay, we'd kind of like to continue on that work, if there'd be no objection. And then see what, see what comes of it.
Well, I think it's, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
You had mentioned, I think, if I'm hearing correctly from moments ago, the idea coming out of the youth council.
Yes.
And student advisory, two different student groups.
Absolutely, two different student groups. Youth council being, you don't need to be a student in the district to be on youth council.
Correct.
And then student advisory coming straight out of the high school. And so, yeah, so there's some discussion there.
Okay.
And that's, that's sort of where that work will be. And I think, I think it's worthwhile. I think we, we felt it worthy in the, in the committee, in the subcommittee. And so we sort of bring it forth, just saying if everyone was on board, we'd like to see if we can, we can offer them sort of a seat at the table to sort of offer their opinion on, on things that we discuss.
So without objection, can we charge the policy subcommittee with drafting a recommendation, whether it's in the form originally of the policy or, or merely, or not merely, but a, a recommendation about to proceed and then maybe a policy crafted after the fact?
Sure, happy to do it.
No objection to that? Terrific.
I'm sorry, when I was reading the minutes, I, I misinterpreted then. I thought, I thought the student wanted to sit on the policy subcommittee. You were saying the student wants to sit at the.
Here, school committee.
At the school committee.
It wasn't specifically him, it was a role of a youth person to have a seat, as we discuss and offer a non-voting portion, but to offer insight into some of the things that we discuss. It is evidently a role that used to exist.
Yeah, back when, I mean, I remember, in the dark ages, that's what it was when I was in high school, and I did it a few times, and you sat through the meeting. That's why, and I think it's kind of evolved into just updates, but I, I think it's a great idea. You know, for the right persons who are interested and would be engaged, it's a great experience to be able to have that perspective.
Yeah, and our understanding is that there were some voices on the current student advisory committee that, that might be interested in that. So, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I met with Ahmed's friend who went to Bill Ricker High School. Now he's at, it's UMass Lowell, I'm sorry if I'm, sorry, if I forgot the college's name. But he sent me the, Bill Ricker's policy, and it clearly outlines what the role is for this particular student that is sitting on the school committee. So that's one place to start, because there actually are school committees that have this already put in place, and the policy is already written. So we can definitely look at a couple of these different school systems and how it actually works, you know, how the student is selected, and, and yeah, so we can come up with a, I think, a pretty workable policy for us to discuss for next year.
Great, okay. Well, thank you for bringing that forward, and good luck on the deliberations.
It seems like fun work. Also, in our committee, we talked a little bit about some potential professional, professional development around school committee, sort of in anticipation of matters that may come up in the future. Some of the, the sort of work around ready, you know, race equity, diversity and inclusion, work that can be so sort of polarizing in our, in our space. You know, we're charging our, our teachers with sort of doing this bit of professional development, how to sort of curate a difficult discussion. I think we've talked about this before, without being subject specific, just how to navigate that difficult conversation. And so would it be of benefit, sort of as it stands behind, you know, we, we draft policies, it's something the district stands for, there may be thoughts from, you know, others around some of the policies that we create. Is there some value in us having some, some development in that space to be a little bit more educated on, on the policies that we're drafting? And our expectations, what are we actually asking?
Thanks for the plug.
So again, work that's happening.
Continue that work as well.
And I, I think that's, that's effectively it for, for our meeting. The next meeting is pushed out a little bit, albeit unfortunately out of pocket for a few weeks. So looking at probably setting, our next meeting will be after our next school committee meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any liaison reports, any members wish to speak to their liaison matters? Steven?
I covered, well, I think we've covered the permanent building committee pretty substantially, I think I'm okay.
So I am, I'm liaison with CPAC. So I actually had the, I had two meetings that I attended, it feels like ages ago. So I sat down for a meet and greet with, with the CPAC and the, and the, the special education leaders within district at every level, sort of moderated by Rosie Galvin. So wonderful meeting. DDS was there, the Department of Developmental Services for, for that bridging into adulthood. They were very interested in, the conversation just gravitated towards transitions. As you talked, Amy, about sort of 12th grade, it was the challenges that some of our population have with, with transition grades, with fourth to fifth or pre- to fifth or pre, pre-K to K to, to eighth and ninth, and then even in this case, you know, up to post and then, and then forward. So there are so many transitions while people are, are in our, our sort of care. You know, and especially with this sort of more vulnerable population, how best to navigate what supports are in place. A lot of good questions and frankly, good answers from the educators in the space. It's clear that there is a comprehensive sort of support structure that exists. And it's, I'm, I'm sure there are, there are areas for growth, but, but it was, it was just an impressive meeting to sort of sit in and, and take part in. It was wonderful. And then I attended their, their Zoom meeting, which I, I think aside from sort of introductions and sort of getting to, to the, the state of business, we talked a little bit about the, the high school building project and the ADA challenges that exist now within the current high school. And not just in a, in a physical sort of disability space, but even in a, people that have learning challenges. Some of our spaces can be challenging, whether it's, spaces are too dark or too echoey or do, they're just, even just navigating the hallways, temperature shifts, you're in a different space if you're in one space to another. Like, there's just all these things that you don't necessarily think about in your everyday, but for some of these families, they're, they're critical, because their students are very finely attuned to sort of changes in environment. And so they brought some of those things into the discussion. We had a very robust talk about, about that space. So, so that's, that's all I have to share with CPAC. Good, good questions and, and conversations going on about the work being done in district currently and things to look forward to in the future.
Great, thank you. Kevin, did you have your?
Well, yeah, but my meeting with the Youth Council was basically all related to what Steven just said.
Okay.
Meeting about the position on the school committee for a youth representative.
Okay. Great. Thank you. One thing I'd, I'd like to remind all, all members, particularly Subcommittee Chairs, is we approved the minutes tonight of among many meetings or among other meetings, meeting of October 12, which was our goal-setting session. So if I could just nudge and remind to all members, but particularly chairs, to have the conversation on Subcommittee Goals. Had an upcoming meeting, if not the next meeting, and, and sort of reflect those back so we can get those announced and, and get behind those, as we had agreed to at our, at our planning and retreat session. So just a little nudge there, if I may.
What's the timeline, Tom, of that?
Well, we didn't really set a timeline, but we didn't want to, we don't want to, we're talking about this in May. We want to, because May is over. We want to, you know, maybe the next meeting or the next, maybe the December meeting or the January meeting at the latest, you know? Some, sometime soon, but certainly within your next couple of Subcommittees, have a conversation on Subcommittee Goals. So we can, I present that out to the, to the, to the, to the full group. And certainly reflect on the, I'm sure we've all read word by word the minutes of October 12, but they were very well done, Judy. I did actually read them, and I'm sure everyone did too. But we can reflect back on the things that we agreed to do. So that, that was a good resource document for, for the next Subcommittee Meetings around goals. Okay. Item 13, Future Dates and Agenda Items. Our next meeting of the school committee is Tuesday, November 29, 7:30 here. We do not have any special or unique meetings between now and then. We may have a Subcommittee meeting here or there, but no, no full gathering. And certainly, the meeting after that will be Tuesday, December 13. So I just, if anyone has any issues or agenda items that they would like to request, please don't hesitate to mention it now, or, or shoot the superintendent or myself an email or a text or something, and we'll get it on the agenda when, as soon as we can. Okay. Going around the table, School Committee Comments. Anyone like to volunteer to make a School Committee comment this evening? Mr. Pedrow?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy the, enjoy the time with your families.
Happy Thanksgiving, indeed.
On the TV if there are any other than Kara right now. But, but, yeah, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving to all, yeah. As we begin the, the winter holiday seasons and celebrations, we want everyone to be safe and, and enjoy each other's company and, and the love and care that we all have for each other. And certainly on Thanksgiving, you know, Go Warriors.
That's right.
All right. Oh, I was going to end on Go Warriors.
I know.
Okay, Steven, what would you like to say?
I thought it was going to be a great end.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted, so I had the benefit tonight of, of attending and sort of helping with an event over at the Woodville School, which is, was cast as, as we are Woodville. It was a parent came up with sort of that alliterative phrase, which, which bore true tonight. It was the reason I was late for Executive Committee.
Is it your button, too?
Pardon?
Is that what your button says?
No, this is a yes for the high school button. So it was just amazing. It was, I, I'll try and give a condensed timeline, but it was, in the summer, Principal Matt Carter sort of put a challenge out to parents that we are one of the more diverse elementary schools in the district. And it was, how do we, how do we showcase that? How do we champion it? How do we come together as a community? Something that I think everybody strives for after the pandemic, that more coming-togetherness. And so a group of parents took that on full, full bore and put out sort of sign-up sheets and just thoughtful questionnaires about what people would like to share. They worked together collaboratively. There was sort of a, a leadership parent group and then, but the people, you can't, so I can't name it. There were, I think, 26 families that sort of brought their own culture. They did like poster boards. There was, every kid in the school made a flag that, that got hung around the school, like for, the kindergartners were like, my, my flag is Godzilla. And then, but as you got up, it was like, there were French, Polynesian, there was like India, there was, there was everywhere, everywhere, so many countries. I know because I put the flags on string. I touched every single one of those flags. It was amazing. And so all these families just sharing their culture, the positiveness, the spirit. There was a teacher, Ashley Perrin, a fourth-grade teacher, spoke a little bit at the beginning of the, the, the sort of event about what is this? What is this culture? What is this thing that we're celebrating? That is this school, this, this life that is our community, sort of in this space. And it was, it was awesome. There were dances. There was no food, except for, we made cider. Nobody drank it. But our family is from Vermont, so we make cider. So we brought in a cider press, made cider. The kids loved it. And then there were, there were dances, there were crafts, there were, but the place was packed. There was a thirst for this. And I know there was a cultural night that used to exist at the Galvin. And I know that there's, there's work about.
Thirst for the cider?
Well, no, that too. But, no, but cultural events, there used to be one at the Galvin. And this, this sort of reminded me of that, but this was like, the energy level was just something else. And I think you'll probably hear about it. And so it would be nice to see that in other spaces. There was, yeah, it was electric and so well-received. I think it's, it exceeded all expectations.
We might have a text waiting for us for math, actually.
So, so, yeah. So I just, just wanted to highlight that, sort of the work that went into it, the, the administration that sought that need and the parents out there that sort of filled it. And the people that were anxious to get into that space. And then, and then the people that showed up to share in it. It just, it fired on all cylinders. So it'd be great to see that in other spaces.
That's great.
Yeah. Sorry.
No, no, excellent. No, please, I'm glad you did. That was certainly great, great to share. A great set of families and, and a great story for the Woodville. Thanks. Okay, without any further ado, we have a motion to adjourn.
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, November 15, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Good night all. Have a, have a great night and happy Thanksgiving.
Bye, Kara. Have a good Thanksgiving. Good job.